Okay, the third item of new business will be the request approval to place a Revolutionary War monument and marker in front of the historic courthouse constructed and donated by Earl Lanning at no cost to the county. That statue, I guess, is this statue here? Have y'all seen that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, nobody see that? Okay, is Mr. Lanning here? Okay, he was at our last meeting and described what he was, I think the county would probably be responsible for doing a base maybe, but the statue itself, I believe, is bronze and it'll be out, it'll be a Revolutionary War monument. We don't, I don't think we have one like that out there. And I think we were talking about maybe putting it around the vicinity of the flagpole, I believe, is that right? Okay. Any discussion on this?
I spoke to Mr. Lanning the other day in the parking lot of the Ingalls and apparently he had told, he told Candy that he was coming to the meeting this evening and he said, "Do I need to be at that meeting?" And I said, "Oh, no problem, I don't think you need to be at that meeting," so that may be why he's not here this evening. So my vote's gonna be for new statue.
Do you wanna make that as a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, so, okay, Kirk made a motion to approve the request to place a Revolutionary War monument and marker in front of the historic courthouse, constructed and donated by Earl Lanning at no cost to the county. And that cost would be for the bronze monument, not for the base, we would probably have to do that, but that'll be later, so, okay. So Kirk's made that motion.
Second.
Brandon, second. Any other discussion?
I know that monument's fairly expensive to make and the material and stuff, so I'd like to say thank you to him for doing that.
Yeah, I've heard tens of thousands of dollars of what those cost, so, pretty, pretty, pretty expensive. Okay, so all in favor?
Well, I got one thing I'd like to ask, not necessarily in to add to the motion, but I know how society has gone to attacking individuals and this is something you might address to him. And I'd just ask him if we could take some of the names off of it because like with what happened with Lee and a lot of other things, people go after an individual because of a history and we want it to honor all of the Revolutionary War people.
Right.
But I'm afraid that at some point, and I know nothing about either of these, that society would turn on, for whatever reason, I think it would be better if it was for all of them and some of the names were left out. That's a suggestion to him.
Okay, just, yeah.
Just in the plaque, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, that is something to consider, they are, you know, it probably needs to be secure somewhat. I know we have cameras, so, I don't know if we have any out there, but it probably wouldn't hurt maybe to, okay. Okay, so all in favor? Ah, okay, anybody opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay. You're off the hook, Kirk. Okay, our next item is the one that we inserted would be the Haywood County School Board is requesting approval of the release of the funds for the purchase of property and I'll let Dr. Nolte describe that. And we have a separate packet that y'all should have on this.
Chairman Dinsley, commissioners, thank you for adding that item to the agenda. I'll give you an explanation of that and then try to give you the history of the board's consideration, the school board's deliberation and consideration of this matter and then Dr. Putnam will talk about the due diligence on the property. Last spring, while I was serving as the interim superintendent, it came to our attention that 10.45 acres adjacent to the Tuscola property was available for sale. And as you know, the availability of expansion for both of our large high schools is pretty limited in terms of space around them that we own and we would like to use both of those campuses for some time into the future. So I was directed by our board to begin having conversations with Champion Credit Union about the seriousness of that property, the seriousness of their sale and what the board might pay for it. That took place for a period of weeks and then back at our September Board of Education meeting on September the 17th, our board voted to purchase the property pending all of the due diligence and work by the attorneys on both sides to look at deeds and of course contingent upon release of Article 40 and 42 school capital funds by the commissioners. The credit union asked us to try to do that during this year and they gave us due diligence up to December. Our plan was that we would do the due diligence, we had a school board meeting scheduled on the 10th, we knew that you had this meeting on the 17th, but we couldn't ask you to consider releasing the funds until our board had approved to go forward with the purchase or requesting purchasing the property after they had considered all the due diligence. So that, that was the delay, our big snowstorm on the 10th. We intended to ask you on the 11th. So with all of that said, you know, that's the process that has gotten us to that point. As I said, Dr. Putnam will give you the details on the due diligence. I'll try to capture in general the, the ideas and the intent of the board that, that might be a little touchy since there are nine of those elected individuals and certainly they have their own minds, but during our discussions, our, our primary reasons for wanting the property is that that's a landlocked high school that we need to use for a long time. We know that there are condominiums adjacent to the property, we know that there are a number of home sites going in above the property and we've actually had, there've been other inquiries about the use of the property that we're requesting to purchase. There are no immediate plans for the school system to do anything with that property. All kinds of ideas have been discussed, some of that's been published, I think, in the local newspaper. The primary purpose is to secure property that we believe we will need later and then also to assure that that property is there and to hopefully prevent businesses to the right of Tuscola Road going up the hill that might not be conducive to lots of high school students running, running up and down that road or driving up and down that road every day. I'll let Dr. Putnam talk about our due diligence and then we'll both be available to answer any questions that you might have.
During the due diligence period, two tests were conducted, geotechnical, there were a number of drillings performed on the land to make sure it was suitable for any potential future builds and also a wetland stream delineation was also conducted. There is in fact a live stream on that property and so with those two, two tests being run, we can tell you that the property is suitable for building. There were three conceptual models applied, they range in a variety of ways. Some would actually involve incorporating the stream or covering the stream and others would not involve using or disturbing the stream at all. So in the due diligence period, we feel like that we're prepared and know what the land is suitable for in building and potential expansion of Tuscola High School and that's the point of due diligence. You were provided copies of the GIS map via email and also the index card which gives you the PIN number and then also a copy of the deed. So what I can tell you in summation is that the, it's a valuable property. As Dr. Nolte alluded to, not only is it suitable for building, it is also a way of protecting who your neighbors are and that's particularly important to a school. Any questions, comments?
Can you elaborate on how the school board voted or how they feel about this purchase? I know there are several on that board, was it unanimous or?
It was a unanimous vote to purchase the land. Actually, I take that back with one, one objection, sorry, one objection.
The, the vote in September to purchase for $500 was unanimous, up to $500,000.
Okay.
And the vote to move forward with the contract had one negative vote last Thursday.
And these funds, where are these funds gonna come from? Is that coming out of y'all's budget?
Well, it's, it's Article 40 and 42 state capital funds, those are sent to commissioners to hold and release when you deem appropriate, but they can only be spent for school capital funds. We have about $800,000 in that line at this time and those funds do come in on a fairly regular basis. Our two capital sources are those funds are for, for capital expansion are for those funds, are those funds and lottery funds. Lottery funds can really only be spent for instructional purposes, could not be used for central office or maintenance or transportation. The other funds that you give us for capital use are in the current expense budget and that's for maintenance and repair of about, about 1.4 million square feet of space. So that's our, that's our fund rundown.
Okay, does anybody have any other question?
Chairman, I'd first like to make a motion to suspend the rules that would, so we can vote on this particular matter since it was not previously on the, on the agenda for the meeting.
Is there a second for that? Okay, okay, you all in favor? Okay, anybody opposed? Okay, then can we, let's see, so is there any other, go ahead.
All right, if there's no other discussion, I'll enter, I will move that the Haywood County Board of Commissioners allow the Haywood County School Board to move forward with the purchase of 10.452 acre tract of land designated as parcel number 8626386109 owned by Champion Credit Union for the purchase price of $500,000 has been, as has been presented to the board this evening.
Okay, thank you for that, Kirk. Is there a second?
Still studying.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask another question? Or do we need a second before we can move on?
Yeah, I think so.
Do we need a second? All right, I'll second it.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
I guess the question I have, pretty large chunk of money, you know, to be voting on at such a short notice. I know Champion Credit Union's wanting you to move forward before the end of the year. I'm not sure what I wanna ask other than needing a little more time to look through this, just to feel more comfortable about it as well, just because it was, I know the timing and I know why you did it, but again, it would come to us last minute, so I haven't had a lot of time to look, look through it and make a, a good informed decision. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure what we need to do, if, if we can move it toward the back end or, if you guys are ready to vote now, then we can do that as well.
I'd like to say that we apologize for the delay, certainly we have had this as part of the public discussion since September, September the 17th, it's been public information and the storm just got us, or we could've gotten all this information to you early Tuesday morning rather than Friday morning. And I, you know, I would tell you that our board gave great consideration to this and a lot of due diligence and, and our biggest concern is that we'll need that property in the future. Tuscola and Pisgah are both, both very viable campuses, they're not brand new, but they're both very viable and we know that property like this doesn't always come available.
And so you, correct me if I'm wrong, but you did say you had $800,000 set aside for purchases like this?
They're, the, the Article 40 and 42 tax dollars are state tax dollars that come to county commissioners and the commissioners hold those funds and those funds can only be used for school capital. That's the only reason that those funds can be used. And so we, we periodically come to the Board of Commissioners and ask you from time to time to release funds that you hold in your accounts, so to speak.
Well, what's that gonna do? I mean, you see anything coming up in the future where you're, you're down to 300,000? I mean, do you see any big bumps in the road coming that's probably gonna get us in a pinch? I mean, but I mean, I agree, I appreciate your comments, you know, when land comes available, it's joining you, especially if it's a good purchase, if you can get your money back out of it if something did fall through in the future, which, it's not in a flood plain, you did a core drill, you can use it.
We can.
It's usable.
Right. Here, here's our thinking on that and I always wanted to defer to my nine-member elected board because they, they pull the trigger, so to speak, figuratively on property. We know that light property sells for more money, Dr. Putnam did some background research on it, we're pretty, the way we have viewed it is that Mission paid about $62,000 an acre for property that's very near this property, we would be spending a little less than 50. Most of our school facilities are in pretty good shape, we don't know what the class size law or the potential construction of apartments or condos might do to any given location. Our biggest, and I think I'm okay to say this because our board has discussed it pretty frequently, our biggest concern is that we have very old administrative facilities scattered all over the county. Our office is a 1927 office with 34 people in it. We have still lots of administrative operations in the old Hazelwood Building, we have a dozen or so special education folks down in the old childcare center, we have the learning center down on the opposite end of Folk Moot, we have school food service in a metal building that has some pretty high internet cost out. That, that's our biggest concern, I don't think a half million dollars is gonna touch the consolidation of that. You know, ideally this property would've become available 10 years ago and we would've already operated on it, but you know, we, it became available in the spring and we feel like this is our one opportunity to purchase. We think we're okay with our school sites for the most part, our biggest need is administrative and that's something that I hope our board and the commission can sit down and talk about as we move into the new year.
Dr. Nolte, go ahead.
Well, I just, I just wanted to comment, I've done some work around that, some surveying and this, this properties is located at the new interchange that they just, that they just got done building, the state just, just got finished and they had taken a lot of land around it and Champion's gonna, they'll sell this to somebody and it may be somebody you don't want there, like a ABC store or something, I mean, I don't know, they might sell alcohol.
I'm glad you said that for us, but we've had discussions along those lines, there are lots of things that could be on that road that we would not want high school students to drive by twice a day, those who are driving.
Yeah, and, and so that, that, you, you have that piece of land at that location, right above this piece of land going up Tuscola Drive, you have, I think it's Castle Creek or Castle, what, I forget what you call that development, that's developed, can't buy that and then behind it you got a mountain and that's extremely expensive to, you might probably buy it cheap, but you're gonna spend a heck of a lot of dollars developing it. You know, on the other side, Mission Hospital just bought that for 62,000 an acre. So, so they're kinda landlocked with, with this, so, you know, and, and I've done a survey, I've done some surveying there, I know, I know there's a fellow that runs convenience stores that has bought the, that owns the property next to Lowe's there behind Richard Reeves' property and that'll probably be developed pretty soon, but that's down, that's down, you know, down there off the interchange. But this rug that turns and goes up to Tuscola, that property on the right is where this is located and that's, it's just, there could be some undesirable businesses located there, I think, in the future, so I can see why, if Champion's made this available to you, that you'd wanna buy it because you're landlocked other than this piece and, and no telling what'll go there, so that, that would be my comment.
You can see the, you can see the location of the property on the map that we sent you.
And so, excuse me for taking so long in discussion, but this did get kinda thrown on us right at the last minute. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I followed this in newspaper and some of the press releases early on with the board members, your school board members. This was deemed as a good purchase as far as, you know, it's been commented on $62,000 for what has been paid for property close by and it seems like, I remember maybe Champion was actually cutting y'all a break, I mean, was that kinda the way I understood that on what they could have marketed that property for?
Yeah, I wouldn't wanna divulge all of the conversations that we have with them, but we did, you know, we did get it at a price that was lower than where we started and it's certainly lower than what Mission paid for.
Did you have something, Brandon?
No, I was just gonna check, I know the date on that was June 30th of 2017, is that just a typo or is that correct?
What is it?
On the sheet that you handed us there?
Yep, that's, that's the sheet.
Just the date on top of it, Dr. Putnam?
Says a year ago.
Was 17, that's why I just wanted to make sure, right at the very top.
That's, give me one second. That's the balance on that date, the 800,000. I don't know if other funds have come in since then, I know no others have been expended.
Okay, that's what I wanna make sure of.
So it'll be more than that probably, right? Is that what you're seeing?
Julie might be able to look and I could certainly get you that answer with some time. That was the balance when that piece of paper was printed. I know we've not spent any because we've not come to you and asked you to release it, I don't know if additional funds have been released from the state since, since that balance of, of 800,000.
I can address that, I'd be happy to address that, I think I, the, the...
Better speak into that a little bit.
The amount that, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, the amount he's referring to is about a year ago, I think. This is, this is some of the sales tax money that we have dedicated to school capital that we're using for debt service and since the sales tax money is coming in much higher than the debt service we're paying, we have accumulated a little bit of the money. We have also, they, they did come to us and ask for 308,000 of this money a few months ago, but we also had more money to go into it at the end of the close of last year. So what we have currently is 955,939, so it's over the 800,000 that he's thinking is there. We actually have close to a million dollars that we're taking this 500,000 from.
Thank you.
She did a much better job.
I just, I'd also like to add that, you know, basically this is their money, it's not, it's not county money, it's, it's their money. They voted by more than a majority to approve this twice and so, you know, generally I have always adhered to if another board has control of something and they have, especially if they have an elected board, to try to do what that board wants to do. The other thing here is, and we haven't, we talked about it some, is the access, I mean, basically there's one main access to this high school and then there's a, there's a minor access on the backside and that's it. If this property was to be developed, then you've got an increase in traffic on that road and there's all way, there's already existing issues in the morning and the afternoon, I believe, and especially with that development, which I believe the development that they have there is going to increase in the number of people as well and they're going to utilize that road, so I, just for the sake of those issues as well, I, I think it's a, it's a good purchase for the long run.
The 300,000 that she was referencing that you'd gotten not long ago, do you remember what that was for?
That was initially to do some renovations to the old Clyde Gym. We received an engineering report that showed it was structurally unsound and then we came back to the board, I think, and revised our request to do the demolition. So we came back, the, the original request was to do some upgrades on that gymnasium, then we, we got an engineering report that was very bleak on the structure of that building and essentially said that it was unsound and there was, the front wall was leaning several inches and so we came back to the board later and asked for smaller funds to do demolition on that building.
So in your opinion, if something like that happened again with any of the other schools, by us taking this 500,000 out of there, is it gonna cripple you to where you could not use your facilities?
Yeah, we're not aware of any other structures that are unsound or have any reason to believe that they're unsound.
Okay.
We, you know, we, we probably just, in, one of my strengths and weaknesses is that I answer all the questions to the best of my ability and sometimes that helps you and sometimes that's hurtful. We, we do think that we probably need to release to, to replace our turf fields in about a year, but we think that we will have enough funds in our lottery capital funds to do that. We can use the lottery capital funds for those as long as we have physical education on those fields and we do from Canton Middle and Waynesville Middle.
Okay. Okay. Okay, we have a motion in a second, I guess, still, right, Brandon?
Yeah.
Okay, y'all wanna, call for a vote?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor? Anybody opposed? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the extra time, I'm sorry.
Good questions and appropriate questions.
Helps when you're spending that kinda money.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, item number four is the request approval to...
Excuse me, I'm sorry. We also need to approve a budget amendment to go with that.
Sorry, budget, sorry, Julie, go ahead.
This, this is gonna require a budget amendment approved to take the money from fund balance since this money was a sales tax money that came to the county and it's restricted for the school capital, we have it, it rolled into fund balance, so I've got a budget amendment ready for you to sign that takes it from fund balance to put into an expense account so that we can cut the check when we do get the, the request from the school system at close.
Okay, can we have a motion then to, for the budget amendment for 500,000 for the school to purchase this?
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second, or Mark, Mark second.
Okay, Mark seconded, okay. All in favor? Okay, okay, thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Sorry about that, yeah, I didn't have that written down. Okay, okay, now, item number four is to request approval to purchase a new model, Mattel voice system from TSA Choice in the amount of 33,371 and 2 cents to be paid from budgeted funds. We have Joey Webb, thank you, Joey.
Good evening.
Hey.
One of the many things that the IT department does here in Haywood County is we manage the county's telephone system. Just a couple of things to note about that that was kinda impressive to us. The phone system we use in the county processes an average of 6,100 telephone calls a day, so that was kind of a unique number that we thought was good for you guys to know. The voicemail system between our automatic attendants and people leaving messages process about 2,000 calls a day, so it gets a pretty good workout. The current system's been in place for about eight years, it was designed by Microsoft and we were just notified a couple of months ago that they are getting out of that business effective April of 2019, so we had to find a new solution. So, we had to find a new solution. The Mytel phone system has worked really well for us. So, we're recommending that we do the voicemail system that is designed to go as a partner system with that. It includes a software assurance agreement, so future upgrades are included as well. So, we don't have anything to worry about there as far as the system being discontinued again like it was with Microsoft, or anything to that nature. We do have money already in the IT budget this year, so I'm just seeking approval for a purchase order.
Okay, and this has been budgeted?
Yes.
So, from your budget? Okay, is any, okay. Anybody have any questions or comments for Joey? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to, to approve the purchase of the new Mytel voice system from TSA Choice in the amount of thirty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars and two cents to be paid from budgeted funds.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anybody opposed? Okay. That's unanimous. Okay, thank you, Joey. Okay, and item number five is to request approval of amendments to the Recreation Advisory Board of, Board of Bylaws. Claire Carlton there, Recreation and Parks Director.
Good evening. In the, in the two thousand seven Comprehensive Countywide Plan, they recommended that we go to geographical districts for our board distribution, and we've had trouble at times filling those positions, and the board has discussed that it may be easier to, to try all the positions at large. So, that's one request, and the other is to bring the bylaws into compliance by setting that they can serve two consecutive terms instead of three, as it states now.
Okay. Hey, Brandon, you're on that board, you, you-
Yeah, just a few comments. We, we discussed this pretty much at length, and it just comes down to, it'd be nice if you could get representation from each district, but when you can't, you need to take who will serve and who has a heart to, to serve on the board, rather than leaving an empty seat. So, that's, that's why we're wanting to move in this direction. That don't mean that we're not going to try to get representation from each district, but it just gives us the flexibility. If not, we can get somebody that really wants to serve on this board.
Okay, is anybody else got any questions for Claire? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the amendments to the Recreation Advisory Board bylaws.
I'll make a motion.
Mark?
Second.
Kirk, second? Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. Okay, then, the second, the seventh item, I mean, I'm sorry, the sixth item of new business is the quest approval appointment of Denise Coleman and reappointment of Kevin Fitzgerald to the Recreation Parks Advisory Board.
Yes, our board met on December the fourth and made the recommendations to appoint both of these.
Okay.
Just so the, Mr. Chairman, go ahead. Kevin has served as our chairperson and has done an excellent job, and just a top-notch guy, so just want to back up the recommendation. And also, from what I understand, Denise served on the board before, is that right, Claire? And done an excellent job, so I think both of these would be a good fit.
Okay. Okay, can we have a motion to appoint Denise Coleman and reappoint Kevin Fitzgerald to the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anyone opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, the seventh item of new business is the approval, to request approval to declare as surplus a nineteen ninety-eight Ford F-250 valued at twenty-five hundred dollars for use as trade-in to purchase a two thousand nineteen Ford F-150 truck from Ken Wilson Ford at a cost of twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars to be paid from budgeted funds. So, and, and I just got to say that this is a great price, this is a four-wheel drive, folks, so. Does anybody have anything they want to? You, do you want to say anything, Claire?
What do they use this truck for?
We have Allen's Creek Park, and when you have a park, you need a truck.
Right.
Right.
Well, I was looking at it, and it's got seventy-five thousand miles on it, and it was bought in two thousand six, used at the time. Do you have any idea how many was on it to begin with?
Probably thirty-two thousand, I think. I'm not sure. We don't, it's not, we don't drive it that many miles, we don't drive it outside the county limits hardly at all. With this new vehicle, we will be able, when it's not in use at the park for other programming, we would be able to use it to go to conferences and other travel as needed, rather than rent a car or drive personal vehicles.
So, this is just as much for travel as it is for use around here? Because it struck me odd that the mileage was low on it, if you take the thirty-two out of it, you're only, you're only putting about two hundred and fifty miles on it a month. So, you're not putting a whole lot of mileage on it. Spending twenty-four thousand dollars for a vehicle that's going to get two hundred and fifty miles a month.
It, it needs some work, the one we're trading in.
I do see where you, you took two or three bids, two or three different dealers bid on this truck, and Ken Wilson, they had the best one.
Correct.
Is there any other, any other questions or comments?
I, I suppose, Claire, with, with Mark's question, if, if the vehicle was, was more reliable, you probably would have driven it more.
Absolutely. It's, it's not reliable.
And in the past, the recreation vehicle was a, a used Haywood County Sheriff's Department vehicle as well, which was very recognizable as you drove it around. So, I suppose this would be the only vehicle, is this the only vehicle that the Recreation Department would have?
The only vehicle since two thousand. It's only, yes, we've never had a, a new vehicle, and it's the only one we have for our department.
And would the vehicle also be utilized by whatever, whoever, whatever assistance, if they have programs?
Oh, yes.
Or need to take equipment here from one place to the other?
Right.
I assume it'll be used for that, too?
Right. We use it heavily for programming as well as maintenance purposes.
I mean, we just want to make sure it's, it's going to be used.
Oh, it'll be used.
That it's not.
And when it's not, we always put it on the list, if, if emergency management needs another four-wheel drive, it's available for them for use.
Another thing to add to what Kirk said is, without elaborating a whole lot, we've been in some discussions of doing more with the recreational department, so I feel confident that it's going to be used quite a bit more, so.
And your board approved the purchase of this vehicle?
That's correct.
Okay, can I, I'll entertain a motion to approve to declare the surplus of a nineteen ninety-eight Ford F-250 valued at two fifty to use as trade-in to purchase a two thousand nineteen Ford F-150 truck from Ken Wilson Ford at a cost of twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars to be paid from budgeted funds. Have a motion for that.
I make a motion to do that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Just, just a comment, Kevin, this is coming from budgeted funds, so.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. All right, thank you, Claire.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, item number eight is to request approval of the Revised Health and Human Services Board of Adju-, I can't pronounce that, I'm sorry.
Adjudication.
Adjudication Policy and Appeal Procedures for Animal Services and Public Health Services. And I practiced that several times, and I forgot.
That's what happened, you practiced it.
I didn't adjudicate it, so. Okay, Ira, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, members of the public. We are requesting that you approve one policy and a couple of procedures to handle appeals that will go before the Health and Human Services Board. The Health and Human Services Board sits over appeals in a couple of capacities. One, they hear things that come up through Public Health, the Public Health Services Division, before those people would go to Superior Court. So, if someone is unhappy with something that happens in environmental health, they would go up potentially before our board, or they might go to District Court, depending on the issue. The other case is about, back in January of two thousand seventeen, this board appointed the Health and Human Services Board as the review, or review and appellate board over vicious dogs. So, if the Animal Services Director, Health and Human Services is not over Animal Services, however, if the Animal Services Director makes a determination about a vicious dog, that appeal would go before the Health and Human Services Board. So, I bring these procedures before you, because this board serves to vote on and approve any operating procedures of the Health and Human Services Board. So, you have to approve any of their operating procedures. And these procedures have been reviewed by three lawyers. I know that Mr. Killian had heavy input into them, as well as Jordan Israel in our own department had heavy input into them, and I reviewed them, to try and come up with a, a best practice model based on what primarily Miss Israel was able to learn from the school government, a best practice model for appellate procedures for boards.
I mean, Brandon, you're on that board?
Yeah, I serve on that board, and again, the board voted on it, and it was unanimous when we voted, so I don't think there's really anything else to say there than we did vote on it, and everyone was unanimous.
Anybody having questions on it?
Ira, do you have a way for the board to make a, just a quick decision? You know, lots of times when it, when it deals with dangerous animals, you don't have, and then there's a bite with a dangerous animal, you don't have that long to determine what to do in that situation. I mean, I assume this takes care of that?
Well, that's a, that's a good question. The time periods for these appeals are set out by statute, and on the animal procedure, and that's a little bit different, which is why we have two sets of procedures, one The timeframe is set out there. The director would have to give notice, and within ten days, they have to conduct that hearing. So, it is a pretty quick turnaround time for a board to hear a, a matter. And that board, the animal would be held, and again, on both of these cases, there are appeals to the court system beyond this. It could take longer.
Yes, if they're not happy with our decision, they can appeal it beyond.
Correct, if, they'd have to meet the timeframes, yes.
Okay, can I, can we have a, an emotion to approve the Revised Health and Human Services Board of Adjudication Policy and Appeal Procedures for Animal Services and Public Health Services?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion?
I would like to ask, Mr. Killian, you did overlook these changes and-
Yes, sir, I thought it was very good. We, we is an additional.
It's not like it happens a whole lot, but it, and also Jordan. And also, I think Ira mentioned Jordan Ezreal, who's a lawyer at DSS, looked over as well.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anybody opposed? Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ira. Okay, the ninth item would be the request approval of contract with the North Carolina Harm Reduction Coalition, part of the CDC-funded emergency grant addressing the opioid crisis in Haywood County funded by the Division of Public Health Agreement Addendum four hundred and ninety, in the amount of sixty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty-seven cents for part of the fiscal year eighteen, nineteen, and fiscal year nineteen and twenty. Hi, and we have with us our HHSA Public Health Education Supervisor, Lauren Wood. Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you, Commissioners. Since this is my first Commissioners meeting, I wrote down some remarks, so I hope you'll permit me to read. So, I'm Lauren Wood, the new Health and Human Services Public Health Education Supervisor, and I'm requesting your approval of a grant and contract with North Carolina Harm Reduction Coalition intended to save lives, improve access to medical care, and build local capacity to address the opioid epidemic. I included four attachments for your consideration, a background handout about the grant, a copy of our accepted grant proposal, the agreement addendum or contract from the state funding this project, and our proposed contract with North Carolina Harm Reduction Coalition, the statewide grassroots organization working to implement improved public health and harm reduction strategies to combat the opioid epidemic. So, I just want to briefly give a little bit of background about the project, and then I'll take your questions. So, in September of this year, all eighty-five health departments in North Carolina were invited to apply for this competitive grant for emergency CDC funding to help prevent repeat opioid overdoses and loss of life, and increase local capacity to address the opioid epidemic. And the grant required five strategies for implementation. In November, we were awarded this funding, a total of sixty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars, forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight of which were for this fiscal year to implement the chosen strategy of establishing a post overdose response team. In Haywood County, our overdose data is a bit limited by the different systems and purposes of the different data that we have, so EMS data, hospital data, public health data, they don't all work together, reporting system-wise. So, hospital EDs reported eighty-five overdoses in two thousand seventeen, and there were fifteen opioid overdose deaths in two thousand seventeen. So, this is an undercount, because it would only be reported if someone were in a hospital after overdosing. Individuals who have previously overdosed are at highest risk of overdosing again and of losing their lives. So, here in Haywood County, when an overdose is reported to nine-one-one, law enforcement and EMS coordinate an immediate lifesaving response. They also reach out to North Carolina Harm Reduction Coalition to provide some outreach within seventy-two hours after an overdose. But there is no systematic way to reach individuals discharged from the hospital after they overdose, and there's no one doing this work full-time. So, we proposed in this project to hire a full-time peer support post overdose outreach specialist. Peer support specialists are increasingly valuable in this work, because they can establish connections and build trust with this population. And as we don't have any on staff at HHSA, we propose to contract with North Carolina Harm Reduction Coalition to hire this person. The remainder of the funding will be used to purchase supplies for the outreach specialists, as well as the project participants. So, harm reduction supplies, hygiene supplies, emergency housing and transportation needs, if, if that's needed, to keep someone safe after the overdose. And it will also include a little bit of staff time to oversee the project at HHSA, fund awareness campaigns and trainings or support groups for families affected, and ultimately help work with EMS and the hospital and law enforcement, as well as North Carolina Harm Reduction Coalition, to establish a team. We have letters of support from the Sheriff's Office, Waynesville PD, the hospital, North Carolina Harm Reduction Coalition, and the Emergency Services Department. And we have the funding, so we just need a, a approval of the budget amendment and the contract, and then we can hire this person to begin offering lifesaving services to the community. Thank you for the opportunity to address the opioid epidemic here.
You did a good job, Lauren. Very thorough.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
I couldn't hear you, that you reported there were eighty-five overdoses in two thousand seventeen, and how many deaths? I, I didn't get that.
Fifteen deaths.
Fifteen deaths, is that just in Haywood County?
Yes, sir.
How's that tracking? I, I know that was, that's a, that's a big issue. Do you have any numbers back twenty sixteen, fifteen? And then- And then is it tracking up or down? Or how are we doing because?
2017 was the highest in recorded history.
Really?
In 2016, I believe it was in the 40s at the hospital. So this is the hospital ED data from local hospitals seeing Haywood County residents.
So it was twice. It went up, it doubled in one year.
Yeah, there was a big jump from 2016 to 17, and I can get you numbers as far back as 2009. In 2009, there were zero heroin overdoses reported by EDs, but last year that was 46. So there were increases all around. And then the deaths, we track because we generate the death certificates at our agency, and it's not as big of an increase, but definitely more from the dangerous opioid overdoses like fentanyl and heroin.
Well, I was looking over your documents and all the people you're partnering with, and I see Dr. Noldy, he's still here. You know, we've got to educate, we've got to educate kids. I mean, it starts there, and I'm sure they're doing a job in our school system, but, you know, I can't emphasize enough how big of a problem this is. It's ruining lives, it's having an umbrella effect, trickle-down effect on everything. You know, orphaned out children, I mean, it, it's a vast problem, it has long tentacles. So I applaud any way we can combat this, and I'd like to see some trackability, you know. We're throwing money at it and that's great, but sometimes when you throw money at problems, if it's not managed right, you're just throwing good money away, and we need to see results. I want to see results for people, you know, broken homes, you know. We don't need to be seeing this tragic thing getting any bigger. I mean, I talk, educate people, whatever we have to do, it's a tragic problem.
Yes, it is, and I think more funding is urgently needed for prevention as well, but the strings attached to this grant were specifically about mitigating the effects of overdoses, and we still think this can be a sustainable solution by establishing a post overdose response team that can reach everybody and make sure no one falls through the cracks, because once they've overdosed, there might be an opportunity to protect them in the future or to get them to treatment, or, you know, whatever is needed.
So this basically would add another employee and be paid for with the grant till the grant runs out, and then what?
And then, well, there was a position advertised by North Carolina Harm Reduction Coalition last year that then got frozen, so potentially this will fund that position for a year and allow them to rehire it as they planned next year. There's also opportunity for this grant to be extended. But if the project can successfully start an inter-agency post overdose response team, then it's conceivable that the people that are already working on it now can continue on the work.
So eventually, if the state of North Carolina says, "We're not going to fund this anymore", there's somebody going to come back and say, "We need to keep this position because we've already started it," and then we would have to make that tough decision.
And that's, an evaluation plan was built into the grant to help make that case. North Carolina Harm Reduction Coalition has also been in discussion with a professor at Western about funding an intern to continue this work if it were discontinued. And right now, it's a North Carolina Harm Reduction Coalition staff, a full-time staff working with Waynesville PD who's doing this work part-time. So we're trying to increase her capacity, but presumably if it weren't continued, we would still make the arrangements to continue the work.
I'm not sure if this falls into the same category or not, but for 85 overdoses in a year, they just hired a community medic. Why couldn't that community medic with a position that's already been appropriated and paid for by the hospital be incorporated with them to do what they're asking to do? Because 85 people, that's less than one every three or four days if they're interacting them and getting with someone to counsel them. I thought that's what that community medic program was for.
Just for clarification, that's just the number reported within the emergency departments of local hospitals, so that undercounts the number of overdoses that happen here if they choose not to go to the hospital, which is the case with some overdoses. But again, the strategies, there were five strategies offered, and this was the one chosen in partnership with everyone from whom we got letters of support and what was funded by the state.
I guess it is funded by the state, at least for the first year. After the first year, if we see that it's not working, then we can bring it back to the table at that time.
And EMS and law enforcement are going to be the most valuable partners in addition to the hospital in implementing this. So they're definitely going to be in close contact with the needs and assessing, you know, how it's going. Oh, and also just to emphasize that that's about 22,000 of the total, and then the remainder of the money will be used for support groups and advertising campaigns and other supplies in addition to this staff person, so that...
And it's not that that probably is not necessary, I just know that once a position is created, it doesn't go away. Somebody ends up paying for it. And if the state decides that this isn't working and we need to go in a different direction, and they say, "You're not going to get your money anymore," then somebody's going to be standing here saying, "We need to fund this," and we just put something in place. I would like to see that work first with a coordination with EMS and their community medic before we dump something that we may not be able to do away with, the people may not allow us to.
It's one of the things that's definitely a huge problem
Yeah.
in our county, and I'd be willing to give it a shot if it did help. I mean, if we, if we do start saving some things that Commissioner Long mentioned a while ago, reaching our young people, whatever we do to keep them off this, it'd definitely be worth it, because it's, you could probably ask any of us Commissioners or anybody in the county and they'd say it's probably our biggest problem.
Yeah.
And it affects everybody, from law enforcement, EMS, county employees, so it affects us all, even, even, even each one of us, I'm sure has been affected by it in some way.
And can I also emphasize that this was emergency funding from the CDC given to areas deemed of high need? So North Carolina got a lot of funding for this and had the, you know, the system in place to funnel this out quickly, and it was intended to be an emergency need.
Okay. And this is a grant from the state, right? And so, okay.
From the CDC via the state.
The CDC, okay. So that's federal, federal?
Oh, well, it's funneling through the state.
Okay, okay. Okay. Okay, does anybody else have any questions or comments?
I just commented to the people out in the audience, we have a packet of information. Chief Hollingshead, he has written a very good letter of recommendation for this program and others. I can't read this one person's name. Handwriting's about as good as mine, I guess, but...
I believe the sheriff, who all, who all had, I know I saw the...
We had letters from the sheriff, from Waynesville PD, from EMS, Greg Schuping, the hospital, from Mr. Harkel Road, and then North Carolina Harm Reduction Coalition.
Okay. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract with North Carolina Harm Reduction Coalition, part of a CDC-funded emergency grant addressing the opioid crisis in Haywood County funded by the Division of Public Health Agreement Addendum 490 in the amount of $66,383.47 for part of this year's budget, 1819, and next year's budget, 1920. You know, entertain a motion for that at this time.
I'd make that motion, with the condition that Ms. Wood maybe comes and presents again in a year and gives us an update on some numbers, and if that's okay with you.
Absolutely.
We'd like to see those numbers go down. We'd like to, I echo Mr. Pless, you know, we need to see some results, and those are the funds thrown at that, but this is a huge problem, and I make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any other discussion? I know that, I feel like the state is really behind the times on this. We've been dealing with this for several years, and nothing seems to be, nothing seems to be done about it other than it's a problem. And, and, you know, there's a sign at Lowe's when you get off the exit, how many people have, you know, died, so, okay. Anyway, any other comments? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed?
No.
Okay, that's four to one. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Wood.
Yeah. Okay, then Julie, let's see. Yeah, we have a crest of a budget amendment for this, for this year's budget. I guess that's this year's $47,988 to appropriate the grant funding from the North Carolina CDC for the opioid crisis program.
Yes, that is. It's 47,988 that we're putting in, the salary line item plus some of the other supplies eyed out, and we're showing this as intergovernmental revenue to cover this cost.
Okay.
Just for the current year portion, just for the 47,988 for the current year.
Right, that's just for this year, it's like what Ms. Wood said, you know, it's for this year. Okay, can I, I'll entertain a motion to approve the budget of, for the $47,988 to appropriate the grant funding from the North Carolina Centers for Disease Control for the opioid crisis program.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed?
No.
Okay. Okay, that's four to one. Okay.